Welcome to the League of Women Voters Brown County Virtual Candidate Forum for Brown County Commissioners District Two. I'm Sherri Frank, President of the Brown County League. The league is nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose political parties or candidates. We provide voters with candidate information as published in the Democrat Newspaper, the Online Voter Guide Vote 411, and candidate forums like this one to help people get to know candidate positions on issues. I'd like to introduce our forum moderator Madison Miller. Madison spent 10 years working in state government and politics before moving to Brown County to become CEO of our local community foundation. She's a member of the Brown County League of Women Voters, an active Rotarian on the Board of the Brown County Chamber of Commerce, and a leader of lots of projects to benefit Brown County. Thank you Madison for moderating this forum.
Thank you Sherri, it's my pleasure to be here. Tonight's candidates in attendance for Brown County Commissioner District Two are Republican John Kennard and Democrat Stephanie Porter Kreitzer. Candidates not in attendance this evening include Republicans Diana Biddle and Ronald Sanders. It's important to note that all candidates on the ballot for the District Two Commissioner race were invited to participate in tonight's forum. Per standingly forum rules, candidates not in attendance were invited to send a proxy to read a prepared introductory statement. However, we do not have any proxies in attendance this evening. Mr. Kennard and Ms. Kreitzer have been briefed on the rules for this evening. Each candidate will be asked to give a one-minute opening statement. Then we will move to a series of questions where candidates have one minute to provide their responses. When there are 10 seconds remaining in a candidate's response, our timekeeper Pam Raider will hold up a yellow card. A red card will be presented when time is expired, at which point I may ask candidates to wrap up their response. The order of the questions will rotate so that one candidate is not always first to answer questions. And we will conclude our round of questioning with each candidate giving a one-minute closing statement. Let us begin with opening statements. Mr. Kennard, you have one minute for an opening statement. Please unmute yourself and begin.
My name is John Kennard and I have decided to run for a commissioner again because I have become more and more disenchanted with the direction our present government is going. And I'm referencing county government only. I find it amazing that a small county with 15,000 people in an annual budget, not counting the school system of about 7.3 million, how we seem to have this ability to spend money we don't have. And it's gotten to be a bigger and bigger concern. And I was hoping that someone with a higher degree of intelligence and more pronounced presence in the county would step up. And none did, except for the four of us that have announced that we're running. So sometimes when the rest of the crowd doesn't join, you've got to make a decision to step up. I was looking forward to retirement. So now I'm looking forward to continuing my public service and the role of a commissioner.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, please unmute yourself and provide your opening statement.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Porter Kreitzer. Born and raised in Brown County, raised our children here. And I, along with Mr. Kennard, agree that I'm very disappointed in the county's spending with, without regard to what, what else we can do or in a more creative way or grants. I've served on the school board for nearly nine years. And I understand the budget. We owned a business. So, and I live by a budget. And you can't borrow from Paul to pay Peter. So it's very important that we take a look at what we're spending money on. Is it a need or a want? And I think for a while, we need to look very seriously at the needs of the people of this county.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitzer. Okay, time to move into the question portion of the evening. So let us begin. First question. What one issue or part of county government would receive more attention if you were elected? Ms. Kreitzer, let's start with you.
Well, one part is very difficult to say. But I believe that we want to have our young people coming back to Brown County. And in order to do that, we must provide good schools. We must add infrastructure for wifi and internet. So that people can work from Brown County if they need to and that our students can, can get that. That's one, one area that I think is very important. Of course, everyone's concerned about roads. And I think we need to take a look at how we're dispensing those funds and what else we can do to to serve people of Brown County.
Okay, Mr. Kennard, same question. What one issue or part of county government would receive more attention if you were elected?
I think there's two factors you have to consider. Over 60% of our population makes less than 30,000 a year. And about 64% of the property in Brown County does not generate property tax. So recognizing those two things, and I agree with Ms. Kreitzer. We need to do something to keep our people here. But how do you do that if you're making 30,000 a year? You can't afford a mortgage, a car payment, and childcare. And we need to look at that. And so that tells me that somewhere, spending has got to be the area that you're going to concentrate on to determine, that's the only place that we've got that we can narrow. So the question then becomes, are we spending wisely? They tell me how much money we're spending on our roads and our roads are terrible. I ride a motorcycle. I'm going to tell you, there's not a road in Brown County that's truly safe to drive a motorcycle on, unless your car or truck. And the other thing is, how do you get young people to stay here if they can't financially afford to live here? You've got huge blocks of land that aren't generating any revenue because they don't, they're, they're tax-free. They're either a federal forest, federal military base, state.
Please conclude.
Got you.
Got it. All right, next question, and it will go to you, Mr. Kennard, to start. What do you see as the top economic development opportunity in our county? What do you believe is the county commissioner's role in facilitating this opportunity?
Well, we recognize that we don't want a Ford plant. So the other question is, how do we generate revenue, taxes, revenue, to be able to afford to do the things that we need to do to protect our people in the county? I'd like to sell a music venue. I hope that doesn't create ruffles in a portion of the county. The county is on the hook for however many millions of dollars it costs to operate that. My suggestion would be, I'd be the first thing I would look at is, how could I entice investors to come in and make a decision that they want to invest in our county by purchasing the music menu? And get that burden off the taxpayers. Working for the health department, we paid $5,000 a month rent because the commissioners wanted to fund that while the COVID crisis was going on. But that $5,000 was charged to our department so that we could provide a public service by providing vaccines to the county. So if it wasn't for COVID and it wasn't for the health department, how are we going to pay for the, for the music center?
Thank you. Ms. Kreitzer, same question. Could you, I, sorry. What do you see as the top economic development opportunity in our county? And what do you believe is the county commissioner's role in facilitating this opportunity?
Well, that's a tough one. And I'm not sure that selling the music center is the right choice. However, I know that that's, there are a lot of people who think that's a good idea. I kind of feel like we're, we're in it. Let's make it work. And it was pretty obvious that they were, the commissioners were trying to pay the payments on the music center in from the health department, from the money they got from COVID. And they used it for several other things. They used it for court and, and paid the music center in order to keep it afloat. Opportunity, let me think. I think just stepping back and taking a clear look at what it is that the citizens of Brown County need. Investors, definitely investors that are going to stay. Definitely. And how to get those, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Next question. Could you identify the top environmental concerns facing the county? And what actions you could take at the county level to address them? Ms. Kreitzer, we'll, we'll start with you. You're muted.
There we go. Mr. Kennard, I'm sure is going to emphasize the sewer septic issues, and he's very well-known for that. Another thing that I worry about is the law, is some of the logging because it affects two things. It's when you, when you go in and just take a large prop, you know, piece of property and, and take all of the, all of the lumber, all of the wood. It leaves several issues that are going to be hard to to fix. And the other thing is that the logging trucks that are using our roads for getting the logs out are, I'm not sure that they're, they're doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. If they're, if they have big trucks, then they can't, they really shouldn't be on our roads.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennard, same question. Could you identify the top environmental concerns facing the county? And what actions you could take at the county level to address them?
First one is, Ms. Kreitzer was right. You cannot have expansion. You can't have a gas station on a septic system. You can't have a car wash on a septic system. If you're going to have any reasonable financial impact. For instance, if you look in Bean Boss, and we've got the Dollar General and Brownies. Brownies is on Pump and Hall right now. It's spending a thousand dollars a week to pump their septic because they don't have a good septic system. You can't have a gas station. So we do need to look at where sewer systems can be to our advantage. And the other thing is, I think we really need to spend a lot of time and concentration on our solid waste districts. Terribly underutilized, in my opinion. We have a huge asset sitting right there at the fairgrounds with all type of equipment that we get money for. But very small percent of the total population is being, is using solid waste. And that stuff we're throwing away, that's ending up back in the ground. That can end up, you know, polluting groundwater. And I would love to see us with a major push in advocating for increased usage of solid waste district. It's self-funding, it's already there. It's an asset.
Okay, next question. And Mr. Kennard will let you start this time. What is your opinion of the current resources in Brown County for medical, dental, and mental health services? What role, if any, do the commissioners have in addressing this issue?
We don't have a hospital. And it's, it's very evident. For instance, if we end up with a foodborne illness, those people that are sick go to Bloomington or Columbus. By law, we are supposed to be notified when those issues happen from citizens in our county. It doesn't happen. So we've got a three or four-day delay from the time something major happens because it happens outside our county, but it impacts the citizens' COVID. When it hits, people go to the hospital. We don't hear about it. We have one doctor, I think, in town. We've got a couple of fantastic nurse practitioners. We've got a huge asset sitting at the wellness clinic that's underutilized and financially affordable for almost anybody in the county. As far as mental health issues, I can tell you, we work with that daily. And we don't have the infrastructure in this county to help people with drug and addiction issues. And we don't have assistance, I don't believe, the way we should have for mental illness. Help, it's just not there.
Okay, Ms. Kreitzer, on to you. What is your opinion of the current resources in Brown County for medical, dental, and mental health services? And what role, if any, do the commissioners have in addressing this issue? Please unmute yourself.
All right. So I agree with John. We are definitely in need of more medical help. Although, when I was growing up, that's been a thousand years ago, there was one doctor, you know. But we didn't have the issues we have now. Specialists and the mental health issues and the drug abuse. I agree with him wholeheartedly on the drug abuse issue. There's just not, I mean, it's, it's better, I think, but definitely needs more. I'm very proud to be, to have served on the school board when we started the Wellness Center. We're hoping to expand that so that we have two nurse practitioners because we see a need for it. And I use that clinic myself. They're very informative, very good about sharing my mental, my medical information, my middle, yeah. My medical information with the, the, the specialist that I go to, so.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Ms. Kreitzer, do you think the county would benefit from the development of a countywide human rights commission? Why or why not?
I don't think, I, I wouldn't, I would think that they would benefit from that. I'm not sure how you would fund that or start it. But I'm, I know that we have a lot of people in the county who need to have someone stand up for them and help them through some things. So yeah, I think that's a good idea. I'm not really sure how to expand on that, but.
Okay, Mr. Kennard, same question. Do you think the county would benefit from development of a countywide human rights commission? Why or why not?
I guess I'd have to have a definition of what we'd expect from a human rights commission. I mean, I, I think, I hope I'm not offending anyone. I do not see a tremendous amount of ethnic diversity in Brown County. I don't see issues that are race-related. I can tell you by working in the hospital. Key to that is more of an economic issue than it is race or, or ethnic. I think you need to be aware of human rights issues. I do think you need to be aware of male, female issues. As far as civil rights, and I don't think I'm being blind to it, but I do see, I do see a one-on-one economic rights commission that works with those of us. There, there's a number of people in Brown County that just don't have the wherewithal to, you know, if we're going to food, food closets all over the county and relying on handouts that, and a good percentage of our population does, I would say that's probably a bigger concern than I, than human rights as I perceive the media using the term human rights.
Okay. Next question. What is the role of county commissioners regarding appointed boards in terms of member qualifications, identifying board responsibilities, and monitoring performance? Mr. Kennard, please go first.
That is an excellent question. There's not a board in Brown County that can't use additional members. If you look at the people that make up the boards, they're the same people that make up the boards continually. It's hard to get people to volunteer extra time, extra hours away from their family. And every board is necessary. Most of single, every board that I'm aware of is a critical factor in putting Brown County and keeping it together. And yet, you can't get people. First off, most people that I've talked to, asked to volunteer, we had some recent openings on the health board. You know what the reason people don't want to volunteer for boards is? They can't stand the personal attacks. And if you look at every single board that's significant, except I don't see it at the alcohol board, the alcohol beverage board. But if you look at planning and zoning and APC and the health board and a number of the other boards, those people that are volunteering their time and their efforts and their energy are getting attacked on a personal basis. And that's got to stop.
Okay, Ms. Kreitzer, same question. What is the role of county commissioners regarding appointed boards in terms of member qualifications, identifying board responsibilities, and monitoring performance?
Well, I would agree with John again, that it's tough to fill board members. I think a lot of people think that it's very complicated and that you have to know a lot about the board you're going to be on. And you do have people mad at you a lot. I can tell you that we've, I've had people upset with me about school board decisions. And you just have to do what you feel is right. Not dictated by what someone in a, in another leadership role would, would take, would suggest. And, and time, time is an issue. And, and you know, it's a lot of times it doesn't take that much time. Thanks, thanks Pam.
Okay, Ms. Kreitzer, as a commissioner, what role would you play, if any, in determining priorities for road paving and, and repair?
Well, I definitely think that we need to take a look at at how we're doing the business of maintaining the roads. Are we prioritizing them? I believe at one time, they were prioritized by county, commissioner districts that each commissioner, each district had a certain amount of miles that they made sure it was taken care of in a year's time. And, you know, I don't, I'm not sure. I guess I see that, but that's really just a political tool. One thing I have to say about being on the school board is that it's nonpartisan. I can look, I can sit on the school board meeting and I can look to my left and I can look to my right. And we have no one to answer to except the public. We don't have any political affiliation. I couldn't tell you how my fellow board members vote in the elections. And so I think that should be wiped out. And if you call or email,
Please conclude.
you should, you should expect a response. And I think that we've been missing that from what I've heard.
Mr. Kennard, same question. As a commissioner, what role would you play, if any, in determining priorities for road paving and repair?
You have to recognize, we've got about 400 miles of roads in Brown County. Half of them are asphalted and half of them are gravel. I live on a gravel road. In the old days, commissioner ran for commissioner so he could get his robe bathed. I'll probably never have my robe bathed. But it is a huge priority. In a county that relies on tourism, we should have the best roads in the state. And we don't. We're doing something, we're not doing something right. If you've got to go back and repave a road every five or six years, were the standards set for paving that road the right ones for long-term longevity? I would like to see our paved roads. I'd like to have a whole entire inventory done on every asphalted road in Brown County to determine what's it going to take to maintain that road for 10 or 15 years, not three or four or five. On the other hand, we have gravel roads in this county that two cars cannot go side by side on. So there's got to be a standard. And I know people get concerned if you want to take a foot of their yard. But we have to be able to travel on these roads. So roads are huge situation in our county.
Okay, next question. And Mr. Kennard, we're going to begin with you. What is your opinion of the Brown County Redevelopment Commission's proposal to create a county land bank?
Great, where are you going to get the land? That's the issue. If you look, I have started a study on how much property is paying taxes and how much isn't. We have people that own, and I'm not against this, don't get me wrong, but I think we have to look at the inventory. We have huge tracts of land. We have people that own 600, 800, and 1,000 acres of land in Brown County that they have no intentions of selling. We have a number of developers. One in mind's got 125 acres up on Helmsburg Road, up off of Helmsburg Road. He wants to develop that for moderate income housing. Well, first off, you can't do it without a suit. You can't do it with septics, okay? So when you start looking at this inventory that we've got sitting there that basically is never going to be broken up, you're not going to be able to have affordable housing in Brown County unless you can come up with a different solution. We've got to figure out what it is.
Ms. Kreitzer, same question. What is your opinion of the Brown County Redevelopment Commission's proposal to create a county land bank? Please unmute yourself.
I sat on that committee as a member of the school board. I represented them. And I have very mixed feelings. For example, the property next to me has a house that's dilapidated. Nobody's lived in it for probably 40 years. It sits right on the highway. But someone's paid the property taxes on it. And it belongs to them. And although I'd love to see something nicer there, it would probably be better for my property values. I don't have to put up with a neighbor. So I, as long as they're doing it in a fair and positive way, I think it could work. But we'll see how that turns out. I, I hope it works.
Okay, Mr. Kennard, Ms. Kreitzer, thank you both for participating in the candidate question portion of the evening. It's now time for us to move on to closing statements where you'll each have a minute to do that. And Mr. Kennard, or actually, yes, Ms. Kreitzer, we're going to go ahead. Um, and Mr. Kennard, or actually, yes, Ms. Kreitzer, we're going to go ahead and start with you. You have one minute for your closing statement.
Okay, um, just so everyone knows, um, I wasn't coerced or talked into running for this office. You know, another week of reading the newspaper and things that the commissioners were doing. And I just casually mentioned it to a relative. And they immediately jumped on it. I said, maybe I need to run. Because all I heard was, somebody needs to stop this. Somebody needs to run. And I said, maybe I should run. And they said, yes, you should. And I didn't give it another thought. I, I called up our county chair to see if I could still stay on the school board while I was campaigning for this office. And I really want to do it. I really, um, think I can do a good job. I can I can compromise. Uh, I can look into the things, the facts of what needs to happen. And I just want to say I appreciate your vote.
Mr. Kennard, your closing statement.
This job is not for the weak, the weary, and the afraid. Um, I'm wanting to be a commissioner and recognize the fact that it's going to take more than three hours a week, every other week. Uh, and I would plan on, if I'm elected, to be a much more present, um, commissioner than possibly one or two of the others. It's a commitment that you need to make. This is my home. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-seven. I went to nine different schools where I got out of high school, sometimes living in a place only six months. But this is now my home. Um, and I want to protect my home. And I'm sorry to see that there are things going on that I am. It sometimes keeps you awake at night, this, the things that are going on and the things that we need to change. And once you know the people of this county, and I would have to say for the most part, most of the people that I've met living in this county are really sincere, have an honest effort in trying to make a living and trying to live here. And it's just going to take somebody that's got the guts that's going to fight the establishment. I'm a pretty good fighter, so I'd like your vote. I'd like to consider me. And, uh, I'll promise you that I'll do all I can to have this county grow in the right way.
Thank you both so much. This concludes tonight's candidate forum. So on behalf of the Brown County League of Women Voters, I'd like to thank each of tonight's candidates for allowing us to get to know them and their positions on important community issues. At this time, I would like to introduce Sunny Lear Camp, co-Vice President of the League of Women Voters, Brown County, who will say a few words to remind everyone to please vote in the primary election, May third. Sunny?
Thank you very much, Madison. Uh, I just want to thank, um, everyone for participating this evening. Um, the League of Women Voters, as Sherry pointed out in her opening remarks, is an organization that is focused on facilitating voting. And, uh, we have a nonpartisan approach to that. We want to make sure, first of all, that you understand that your vote is your voice in government. So we feel it's important for you to be prepared, know your deadlines, and to be able to, uh, understand the process that allows you to, this important role that you can play. Make sure, first of all, that you are registered to vote. Um, the deadline, uh, for being registered is one month before the election, which for the primary, um, is April fourth is the deadline. Even if you believe that you are registered, make sure and go online, check and make sure that your registration is, um, is showing up as valid and that you know where your polling place is. Uh, there are different ways that you can vote in the, both the primary and in the general election. You can vote early in person. That starts April fifth and ends at noon on May second, the day before the actual primary. You can check the hours and the poll locations at indiana voters.in.gov or call your county clerk. Um, you can also vote absentee by mail. If you are over sixty-five or qualify for another reason, you can vote by mail by making sure that you apply, um, so that the application for your absentee ballot is received in the clerk's office by April twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. You can also vote in person uh, on primary election day on May third from six AM to six PM. Um, be sure to go to your designated polling location to do that. Uh, you can also find that on indiana voters.in.gov or call the county clerk's office. Uh, there is also a traveling board if you are homebound or ill. All you have to do to apply to vote by, um, the home, through the homebound process is to apply by noon on May second to have a bipartisan team help you vote. Make sure that you know your candidates. Go to vote four-one-one where there are this, uh, local, state, and federal, uh, candidates who have filled out information to help you get to know them better. Uh, we are so privileged to be able to be involved in this process and hopefully to enable you to feel that your vote is, um, effectively made and counted. Thank you again for your participation.